If you would, please stand with us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Sandy, could we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Shippers.
Here.
Schoolman.
Here.
Ingalls.
Here.
King.
Here.
Mayor Fulkens.
Here. At this time, we'll open the floor for our first public comment this evening. We do ask if you come forward for public com-- oh, I'm sorry.
If I-- I'm sorry, if I could just pause you--
Oh, I have to do the approval of the agenda. Thank you so much.
We do-- I do have one quick request. I'd like to remove from our agenda item regarding the intent to designate a commercial redevelopment district, item 7C.
7C.
Yes. We'll be bringing it back likely in the next couple of weeks or so.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Could I make a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda with the removal of item 7C.
Support.
Councilmember Schoolman.
Yes.
Ingalls.
Yes.
King.
Yes.
Shippers.
Yes.
Mayor Fulkens.
Yes. Motion carries. Now at this time, we'll open the floor for our first public comment. And we do ask if you come forward, if you state your first name, and then write your name and address for the clerk. It's very much appreciated. And if you could keep your comments to three minutes or less.
Good evening, council. My name is Evan, E-V-A-N. My address is 535 Sunnyside Drive, Cadillac, Michigan. I stand here today as a longtime member of this community, ten-plus years. I moved here as an adult. I stand here as a local worker, a local taxpayer, and a local father, raising four children. I also stand here as a medical marijuana patient for a disease, or not a disease, an injury that keeps my working rather local and rather limited. And I can't stress the importance enough of how hard it is for some of us to drive 100-plus miles to a medical marijuana facility 11 years after our state has voted it legal. When we see companies in cities like Bay City, or until recently as close as Traverse City, flourishing, helping patients, helping people, adhering to their vote, and we stand here with this conversation about recreational marijuana as well, well, I feel we skipped over the very important part, 11 years in the making. So, like I said, I stand here as a community member, a father, a taxpayer, a voter, and I cannot stress the importance enough of a medical marijuana facility being local to patients so that it keeps things local as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Evan. I will let everybody know that we do have a public hearing this evening. We have two on the medical marijuana and the recreational marijuana. And there is a public comment section to those hearings where you can stand and talk about your support or lack of support for that hearing.
Was that a separate hearing?
It is.
This first part, just the recreational marijuana?
No, this is just for the meeting. This is the first general public comment, but I just wanted to let everybody know that there will be a public comment for both of those hearings. So, there's an opportunity for us to have that discussion and hear your comments during the hearings, too.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, and greetings. My name is Eric Gunnels, and I am from Thetford Township, Michigan. I come all the way to Cadillac as a trustee and councilman of my own community to offer my advice in any way that I can to both the council of Cadillac here and also to the residents of Cadillac if there are any issues that can be addressed. I will gladly speak during the public hearing section on both the medical marijuana facility section and the recreational portion of it. I look forward to even possibly answering any questions you may have, addressing any, you know, concerns, or giving you a scope of what we went through, six months of vigorous hearings, public hearings and so forth, to adopt an ordinance that we did in our township. And I could point out many of the mistakes that we made, as well as give you ideas that may help you govern this in the future. And with the best of luck, I grant you. Thank you.
Seeing no one else, we'll close public comment and move to the approval of the consent agenda. And this evening, we have the minutes from the regular meeting that was held on August 19th.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Councilmember Ingalls.
Yes.
King.
Yes.
Shippers.
Yes.
Schoolman.
Yes.
Mayor Fulkens.
Yes, motion carries. And so with that approval, it will take us in our agenda to the first public hearing. And Marcus, would you like to present that?
Yes. Thank you, Mayor, and members of the city council. This evening, we have two public hearings. The first one is regarding recreational marijuana establishments and essentially the consideration to allow certain recreational marijuana establishments within the city limits. As a brief recap, the city council has been discussing these topics for quite some time. At your last city council meeting, just a couple of weeks ago, we had a great general discussion between, you know, everybody on the city council, as well as the city attorney in looking at these matters and these items. Sort of the general consensus in how we are looking at putting the draft together for your review and consideration this evening as a part of tonight's public hearing was based on the feedback that was received at the last meeting. The council's consensus was essentially to permit or to allow for the city to permit one license in all of the classifications with the exception of the retailer classification whereby you would be allowing for two. In terms of the zoning-related items, the spacing, the location of the land use, we get there after the planning commission will first review that. The city attorney who's on the phone will also take us through, just a quick brief, what I mean by that. But after you go through tonight, assuming that the council moves forward in an affirmative fashion with both of these public hearings, recreational and medical, the next step would be for your planning commission to then have their discussion, their public hearing, and debate regarding the zoning and the spacing and the location. That then comes forward in the format of a zoning amendment to the city council that then requires another public hearing at this level before it would be in effect. And so, again, you know, this evening, what we're looking at is essentially the ordinance that sets the foundation. It establishes the number of licenses that you would be allowing within each of the classifications. It also establishes the base fee. The ordinance, the way it's written currently, establishes that base fee at the initial $5,000 permitting fee. There is opportunity, if council wishes to discuss, well, not just that fee, but what the recurring annual fee would be if at a different level, you're certainly able to discuss that as well. And I would recommend that if you're thinking of doing something at a different level, that we also add language within the ordinance that would allow council to reflect and change the ordinance by way of resolution as time goes on. All that being said, Mike, why don't you take us through your quick brief on where we're at in terms of recreation? Mike? Take your phone off mute.
It is off mute.
Oh, okay. All right.
All right. So, we're talking about two different ordinances. Did you want to do medical or recreational, or both at the same time?
Well, why don't we hit recreational first, because that's where we're at on the agenda, and then we'll do the public hearing after your brief, and then have council move forward, and then we can do the medical after.
All right. So, we revised the ordinance to provide for those number of facilities that the city council discussed at its meeting. That's found in 10.2-02 subsection B, starting with one grower operation operating under Class A, one under Class D, one under Class C, not more than two retailers, not more than one processor, not more than one secure transporter, one safety compliance establishment, and one microbusiness. We left zero for designated consumption establishment and zero excess marijuana growers as prohibited in the city. Apart from that, there were some minor tweaks here and there. I think, consistent with some of the prior discussions under 10.203, the timing of submissions, the city is not going to accept applications until December 9th. That in part is driven by what city manager Pecha referred to as the zoning components of these, that is, establishing those areas in the city in which these facilities can be located. That will be consistent with a planning commission recommendation and final approval by the city council, as well as the spacing considerations in those zoning districts in which these facilities may be located. So, this is the first part, the regulatory portion, which would allow the use, and then consistent with the zoning, that city council will ultimately be required to pass on as well. That, we haven't gotten to yet, but the planning commission will consider those, as well as spacing requirements, make a recommendation to the city council. City council then will have the final authority on that, on those proposed amendments as well. The required application materials is under 10.2-03, including the nonrefundable application fee in an amount established by resolution of the city council. I know that city council may want to have some additional discussion on that as well. I think the competitive process is important to point out. That is under subsection E, and assigns points to scoring the applicant based on a series of different criteria and points assigned to that criteria. The competitive process is required by statute, which is a little different than the medical marijuana, which could be decided by lottery. So, in terms of the process, it's set forth in the ordinance. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have regarding the recreational at this time or at a later time after the public hearing portion. Next, I'll turn to the medical marijuana portion. Because--
Hey, hey, Mike. We're gonna pause on that one.
Okay.
We're gonna see if the public has any comments, and then I think after the public portion of it closes in the hearing, council will discuss. I know that there are a couple of tweaks to the language that we'll just hit really quick, and then we'll move into the medical one.
All right.
All right?
Okay, so at this time--
Okay.
He's still talking.
No.
So, at this time, I'd like to go ahead and open the public comment as it relates to the recreational marijuana public hearing. And same criteria as before, if you come forward, if you'd state your first name, and then if you would write your full name and address for the clerk, and then please keep your comments to three minutes or less.
Oh, Don Kosmider, 3576 Sera Street, Cadillac. I'm here to speak in favor of recreational marijuana establishments, even though I support medical marijuana. I personally think that there's no difference between the two, because people don't use marijuana to make them feel bad. I support, in particular, recreational marijuana establishments because the racketeering that has taken place in the Medical Marijuana Facilities Licensing Act, in particular, the capitalization requirements are not very attainable for mom-and-pop businesses. I think with the recreational rules being released early in July, $8,000 for a microbusiness license, mom-and-pop can certainly get in if they want it there, but I support recreational marijuana businesses.
I certainly wanted to give anyone else an opportunity to speak. I just wanted to kind of go over what my township had done a year and a half ago at the adoption of what we call the MMFLA acronym, or the Michigan Medical Marijuana Licensing Facilities Act. My opinion of this, and I am a pro-cannabis official, I did support the 2008 ballot initiative, and just after the 2008 ballot initiative passed, I became one of the first licensed caregivers in the state of Michigan. In 2012, I was elected to my township trustee position, and I also serve on my township planning commission. I have served for the last six years. I was re-elected in 2016, and currently still hold that office, and still currently serve on my township's planning commission. With that said, I just want to bring about a couple of ideas and scenarios that were problematic for us during that six-month grueling process. One of the things is that, as Mr. Kosmider just mentioned, is the capitalization requirements. And what inevitably happened throughout the course of this action is we had approximately 11 facilities operating within the township that had, you know, township permission to do that ahead of the game, so to speak, when a lot of this gray area of the law was unclear at the time. During that, when we went to adopt the ordinance, a lot of people thought that this would break way for a lot of these, you know, separation of people who could get licenses and who couldn't. Unfortunately, many people who thought that they could get a license ended up not being able to get one, due to the, either the capitalization requirements or other criteria spelled out in the law, which I think, written by the Michigan State Legislature, was a bit too much criteria for this type of business. And in essence, what I'm trying to say is, the MMFLA really tries to regulate marijuana like it's plutonium, when I don't think it needs that type of regulation. Recreational marijuana is, I do support that, I do support Prop 1, but as a trustee of my township, I opposed the vote of the MMFLA, even though the rest of my board did approve it and did pass it. But I want to give you reasons as to why I voted no, because I think that is the most important aspect as to understanding a bigger picture of this subject. I was fully aware that the Prop 1 would pass ahead of this, and I advised my board that, you know, look, there was really no hurry to institute any kind of thing in this because, with the MMFLA, because obviously, I knew that the state was gonna take a long time to implement this. At the time, the state did not even have their board formed, their committee, rules committee formed, so there was a lot of setbacks, and we all know that. But for the most part, the importance that I want to get to is that what we did was, is we allowed the MMFLA to be adopted--
Eric, I have to interrupt.
I'm sorry.
We have reached your three minutes.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So, I need to wrap up.
No problem, I will. With that, what ended up inevitably happening is that we licensed a few MMFLA holders, but in essence, what we did is we crushed the mom-and-pop businesses that would have been able to be there instead. I want, just, that's my main point that I want to get across to you, to keep that in mind.
Hi, Evan Day again. First timer, if you couldn't tell from my misuse of the public comments earlier. I do want to voice my support for the recreational, as I did vote yes on Prop 1. Both gentlemen have made some good points as far as the businesses, but just again, for principle, I did want to voice my support for this. This was a vote. And I've been to the recreational shops, one I mentioned earlier down in Bay City, professionally franchised. The business is franchised out of Colorado, and they are now collecting Michigan tax dollars. And Bay City also has local shops, locally owned, I would say. But the fact that an area can have a company in Colorado making money off it is a bit ridiculous. I think our area should adhere the vote and open it up to recreational shops. I will also be back up here to make my points on the medical aspect when that hearing is available.
Mayor, council members, my name is Mel. I'm in favor of recreational marijuana. I don't want to get into the philosophical of whether it's good or bad, but it is legal. The process is being put into place, and strictly speaking, I don't understand why anyone would be opposed to keeping businesses local, tax-paying businesses here, local, in the community, as opposed to having people drive somewhere else. So, I fully support going forward with it. Thank you.
My name is Michelle. I am a full-fledged advocate of recreational and medicinal marijuana. I am a lifetime resident of Cadillac. I have voted, I have paid taxes, and I have done everything in my power to be, at least in the last few years, to be more part of this community. It took me moving to Germany for two years and then coming back to just fall in love with this community again. It is in my belief that allowing facilities for retail, for consumption usage facilities, smoke shops if you would, as well as multiple different availability spots for people to grow and to transport and the like, would be very, very beneficial for this community on even just the money aspect. On top of that, it would bring more business into Cadillac because of all of the surrounding townships that have opted out. Knowing that I, as a medical marijuana user, have to drive, like Evan said, over 100 miles to get marijuana, just so I can actually feel okay, is heartbreaking. And I know that's a little bit separate from, you know, recreational, but recreational alone could benefit this community far more than I think a lot of people realize. And that's all I've got to say tonight.
Seeing no one else, we'll close the public comment and move to the discussion with the council. And as Marcus stated, there were a couple of points that we still needed to talk about.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, and members of the city council. I know that on page seven, just to skip ahead, within the scoring chart, a question was raised about what glazing was in reference to, and that's under essentially establishment design. That's in reference to window tinting, and perhaps we just clarify that as a part of the final draft, to clarify that glazing is window tinting. We can strike that word, window tinting. There were a couple of other non-contextual suggestions that were made, as, for instance, on page five, subsection C, adding clarifying language within the first statement. So, the first statement says, "The name, address, tax identification number, and current zoning designations of the proposed marijuana establishment," adding, after, "current zoning designations of the," adding the words "property" on which the proposed marijuana establishment, and then adding "will be located," as, for instance, was suggested. Under D, after the word "record," adding the following, so it would read "The name and address of the current property owner of record of the property on which the proposed marijuana establishment will be located," was suggested. Under E, adding the word "signature" after applicants. Again, just clarifying, not changing the context of what was in the original draft. And then, under E, subsection B, adding, after it says, "However, only one application shall be submitted per property," adding "per proposed marijuana establishment property." Again, just clarifying language, which I don't have any problem with. And I don't, unless Mike speaks up, I'm assuming that Mike is okay with that as well. The matter of context really is on page 10, under subsection D, that you'll find under section 10.2-05 under General Regulations D, is in respect to the annual fee. And so, as it's currently written, it refers to a licensing fee of $5,000, and the thought is that council needs to clarify, this was an item that council started to discuss at your last meeting. It's proposed in this fashion where it would be both an initial and an annual fee at that level. If council wants to see something different, that's okay. My recommendation would be that we stay with the $5,000 initial fee for the permit, but if you want to look at adjusting that, maybe cutting it in half, or doing something different as far as then the annual fee, and then also adding language that would allow us to go back and change it by resolution of the city council, once we actually have some of these establishments in place, and we can start to track and see what the impact is to the community, and make a different recommendation that gives us that flexibility. And Mike, I'm not certain if you wanted to address any of the information that you have on that as well, or no?
Well, the last time we discussed this, the city had asked us to look at a couple of jurisdictions, one of which was Manistee. From what I can tell, Manistee has a $5,000 application and renewal, so, and in fact, I don't know, and we looked, I don't know of any that have set fees less than the statutorily authorized $5,000.
I think there may have been a township or two that council member King, or maybe council member Ingalls, had indicated that they had saw where it was lower, but I couldn't tell you what the name is off the top of my head.
My thought on that, Mike, is that I liked Marcus's idea that we build into this that council has the ability to review and change these fees as we see how this works, but that we identify, or at least define, an initial application fee versus an annual renewal fee, to give us that flexibility.
So, are you saying, don't have in here the renewal fee, and just wait and put that in later?
No, I think--
Or put a renewal, have it be the same as the initial fee, and then review it after?
Well, and I guess this is a question for Mike. If we identified the $5,000 as an initial application fee, if council's going to go with that, and then there would be an annual renewal fee of, and leave that blank until it comes back to us, to be able to determine by resolution if we're gonna add the language that we have the ability to do, that at that time, after it comes back from the planning--
So, we see what the costs are, and we don't end up having it cost us money, but also don't end up being just a fee for the sake of a fee?
Right, I don't want to go from $5,000 down to 500 right out of the gate. I wouldn't, I mean, if we're gonna be conservative about things, I think that it would behoove us to, you know, not have 5,000 as the renewal, but-- would behoove us to, you know, not have 5,000 as the renewal, but it certainly needs to be higher than 500. But, and along with that, whether it's 2,500 or $1,000, along with that, having the wording in there that on an annual basis, then we will take a look at what resources are being used by the city so that it can help determine what that renewal fee truly should be.
Don't you think that somebody who's applying though will want to know what the annual renewal fee is going to be?
I would agree. I don't like the blank being left there, but what I'm saying is when it comes back to us, we already know, okay, the application piece is going to be, or fee is going to be $5,000. Now we have to decide, what is the annual fee coming out of the gate? We're going to say it's going to be 2,500. And until we change that by resolution, it's going to be 2,500.
So if I can, if I may repeat what I'm hearing, I just want to make sure I'm following the conversation. What I think I'm hearing council suggesting is that we set the initial, which would be the first time, so the initial annual fee, or the initial permitting fee, or application fee. The initial application fee is $5,000. Subsequent application fee will be determined, or we, okay, will be 2,500?
Not application, renewal.
Annual renewal fee.
Okay.
I'm throwing out 2,500 for consideration.
All right, so subsequent annual renewal fee
Now that can be changed by the
will be 2,500 and can be adjusted
By resolution.
by resolution of the city council, you know, thereafter.
Boy, we got there fast. I'm in total support of leaving it at $5,000 a year. If we're supporting this, it's going to cost us money to do this, and we, I don't think that $5,000 is unreasonable.
Each year, the renewal, one, two? And if it turns out to not be that, we can by resolution change it. Now, my question is, anyone who applies pays the 5,000, not just the ones who are licensed?
No, that was different.
Okay, good.
That's the application fee that we need to discuss.
Right, but this would be the license fee? $5,000, I'm confused, is the $5,000?
The application fee, the initial application fee is $5,000. And then the annual renewal is 2,500.
If we pick.
If we pick that. And then whatever we pick for that renewal fee to be, and it'll stay that until we feel that we need to change it, and then we can do that by resolution of the council.
And to answer part of council member Spelman's questions, and I've looked at so many ordinances lately, Mike, my memory is in here, if someone pays the application fee of $5,000 and it's later turned down, or they don't make the competitive process, there is provisions in the ordinance for returns of portions of that fee.
Okay, that was what I was going to ask, because I realize there are costs for, involved in processing an application, but if you don't, aren't awarded the license, I like the idea of there being some kind of return of that based on what it costs to process.
And did we talk about that before, about what that fee would be if they can't get the state license? We're going to return the money minus what?
Well, I think we're mixing a little bit. And Mike, I guess for clarification, I would assume the city wouldn't take somebody through the process unless they have the license from the state first.
This is our city license.
Well, it says a licensee must pay a fee, so they have to get the license before they can qualify for that.
The state license.
Yeah.
The state license, right.
We could still turn them down if they lose our bidding process.
So what's the difference between that annual fee then and the non-refundable application fee?
Right now, nothing, and that's what we're debating, is whether or not there should be a different payment.
See, I look at them as two different things. One is an application fee, then the other one is the annual fee.
And that's what we're debating, is whether to set the annual fee at a different rate than the initial, the initial fee. So it's one and the same in year one.
The application fee hasn't been established to be $5,000.
No, we're just, we just threw that out.
So we need a separate application fee?
Mike, are you hearing this?
Yeah, that's Yeah, I'm getting most of it.
Okay. So the question, the question really is whether or not there should be a separate application fee versus a, versus the annual fee, right? So like, let's say somebody wants to pick up an application, do we charge them 100 bucks to submit the application? And then if the application is approved, upon, you know, submittal of the $5,000 licensing fee, they then get the permit.
Yeah, no, that's not how it works.
Right.
How does it work?
Right, so why don't you clarify?
Yeah, so the application fee is non-refundable, $5,000. Whether you end up getting one or not, the only, the only return, and that's different from an annual renewal fee, which is presuming that somebody has a permit, a license to begin with, that annually, then to renew that, they have to pay that annual renewal fee.
Right.
But the only provision for the refund of the administrative fee is under that subsection H on page eight.
Oh, the waiting list?
Yes. So upon discarding the waiting list, the clerk will refund the advance of the annual administrative fee established in 10.205E to all applicants remaining on the waiting list. That may happen if you meet the maximum number of establishments.
Right.
So then you're saying that if somebody did lose out in the competitive bidding process, they would get their money back?
Right, right. Does that help, council member?
Yep, helps me.
I'm getting, we're getting nods.
Okay, so
Why does it say non-refundable? It's quite crazy.
Well, other than if you're on the list, so.
So the first round, before there's a list, everybody pays 5,000 and it's non-refundable?
Except it's a competitive process. So we're establishing that there's only going to be one license granted for each of the classifications with the exception of retail. Under retail, we're saying that we're willing to grant two licenses. Unless I'm not understanding it correctly, let's pretend that we had three applicants, or four applicants, or five applicants that wanted to be considered as a part of that process, we're only going to grant the license to two. So the other three would then get refunded their licensing fee that didn't make the cut.
Okay.
And then the question that's still lingering out there is, on an annual basis, what should the renewal fee be? And, you know, there's information out there, there's data out there that shows that there is a cost to society, you know, not much different than other types of uses that are out there. We're allowed in this instance to recapture up to $5,000 per license that we use, or that we grant, rather. That doesn't mean that you have to set it that way. And that's where, I didn't mean to confuse anything, I was just trying to provide council with the option of understanding that you do have the option, you can set it wherever you want to set it, and you can certainly make it easier on yourself moving forward if you, by amending, or not amending, but by putting into this ordinance your ability of changing those rates simply by resolution, you know, in the future. So, you know, it's, the sort of default position that you're hearing, I think, from staff is, let's start it at $5,000 minimally for the initial fee. And certainly we would be comfortable in supporting that for the annual fee, the fee that would happen thereafter. However, if council does want to jump into something less than that, that's fine. That's what we're here to talk about. And if you do jump into something less, or even if you keep it at the $5,000 level, I still think it would behoove the board to allow, or to have the language in the ordinance that allows you to change it upon post, you know, program implementation simply by resolution, kind of how we change our, want to say it's our refuse rates, we're able to do it by resolution, so.
So, thinking about that, would it be better to, in planning, I'm thinking as a business owner, to have a resolution bring it down, rather than we set it low and find out we have to charge more later? I think it'd be better to plan for more and have a pleasant surprise if it dropped. Let me see that.
I think if we have the language in it that says we have the ability to change it by resolution, two scenarios. One, if we feel it needs to be adjusted just out of equity, we can do it. Or two, if it came back that concern we had talked about before, if the amount we're charging is viewed as a tax rather than a fee, we'd be able to adjust it at that point, too. Then I agree with you. I think it's easier to bring it down than it is to take it up.
The key is creating the flexibility in the language.
Right.
Because you could do it in the course of one
One meeting.
One meeting.
You don't have to set a hearing.
So we could just leave it at, the licensee must pay a fee of 5,000, and then, and right now we could say that the renewal fee is 5,002, unless a year down the road, we're putting in the language that a year from now, through a resolution, we can
Yes, and I think the only thing that we need to do in this, though, if we choose to act on it, is go, if it's 5,000 for both, that's fine, but we need to say, initial application fee and annual renewal fee, so that we have the flexibility to change either one or both.
Right, okay.
I would agree.
Right, if it helps, I'll give a stab at this. I'll go ahead and make the motion to approve the resolution to adopt ordinance to add new section 10.2 to chapter 10 of the Cadillac City Code to allow certain recreational marijuana establishments operated in accordance with state law, along with the common adverbage changes for clarification as outlined by the city manager, along with making a distinction between an initial application fee and an annual renewal fee, which at this time will be 5,000 for both. And to add verbiage to clarify the word glazing to tinting of windows, so that it goes along with our zoning, and I think I've covered it.
The only one thing that needs to be added into that was under the fee provision.
And also to allow council by resolution
Yes.
to adjust both the initial application fee and the annual renewal fee, as needed.
Support.
Council member King?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Spelman?
Yes.
Engels?
Yes.
Mayor Folkes?
Yes. Motion carries.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the city council. Mike, are you still with us? I think he is. We're going to get into the next public hearing. This one is regarding the allowance of medical marijuana facilities within the city of Cadillac. Similar to recreational marijuana, there are a host of different facilities that are identified under the state act. The city council's discussion at their last meeting, generally speaking, established through just conversation, this draft ordinance that you have before you this evening, where, again, it allows for one license to be granted for each of the uses with the exception of provisioning centers. Provisioning centers, within this context, refers to retail-type establishments. And similar to the recreational ordinance, it would allow, in this instance, for medical, for two of such. And so similar to what Mike did, I'll just read through the classifications. Not more than one grower operating under class A licenses, not more than one grower operating under class B licenses, not more than one grower operating under class C licenses, not more than two provisioning centers, not more than one processor, not more than one secure transporter, and not more than one safety compliance facilities. And again, also, I think it's important for me to just reiterate, not necessarily for council, but just for the general public to understand, you know, the process that we're going through. You know, what the city council is doing this evening is setting the foundation for which the rest of the process is going to build upon. We can't really bring this forward to the planning commission for them to have their discussion in analyzing the location, the separation distances of where either of these uses, and when I say either of the uses, I'm referring to medical or recreational, would go within any of the host of classifications that fall under either medical or recreational. So the planning commission is going to have that discussion the end of this summer and into the fall. That discussion will result in likely, I shouldn't say likely, but it would have to result in an amendment to the zoning code. That process requires a public hearing. The result of that public hearing and the recommendation from the planning commission will then get brought forward to the city council. That triggers then another public hearing for the city council to have before, you know, the process is finalized. All of that, with the trajectory that we're on right now, would be done in time for the, essentially for our December 6 launch date of accepting applications into the city. But it is, it is a process that's going to keep us quite busy. But back to the, back to the item at hand, there were a few clarifications that were being recommended within the ordinance. Council member King had provided some comments, and Steve, if you want to get to it, maybe after we open up for a public comment, I don't have that red line with me, or you can give, or you can give me this one. But they were very similar, thank you, very similar to the same clarifications that we just went through on the recreational side. With that, Mike, is there anything you wanted to add? As we give him a second?
Do you want to eat dinner or something?
Did I lose him? I may have lost him.
Is he at home, or is he sitting in his car somewhere?
Unsure.
Hopefully not in his car, because it's not in operation.
By the side of the highway. Waiting for a wreck or waiting for AAA.
Hopefully he's been rescued by now.
Hey, lost you, putting you back on. You there? All right, so we're doing recreational? Or, excuse me, yeah, sorry, medical. And I just gave the three-minute Reader's Digest version here, read through the list of classifications, and wanted to know if there's anything that you wanted to add regarding the brief, any salient differences?
No, the only, we tried to set this up similar to the recreational, so even though medical doesn't require a competitive process, we've done our best to keep it consistent with the recreational, so that's what we've done.
And we're still looking at the December 9 date?
Correct.
Yep. Anything on fees that you want to talk about? You did hear the, how we ended the last one, right?
Yes.
Okay. So 5,000 again?
Correct.
Right. And we would want to make the same recommendation to change. So, Mayor, unless you have any questions for Mike, or Mike, do you have anything you want to add right now?
No, that's it.
Okay.
Okay, at this time, we'll open the floor for public comment as it relates to this hearing and the medical marijuana.
Hello again, council. Again, apologies for possibly misusing my first time for the opening of the meeting in my public and my public comments. I was short, but in support for the recreational hearing. But this one being the reason I'm here, the medical marijuana. And the fact that it is second to recreational marijuana is essentially a punch in the gut to the 11-year law. I'm sure this council has had this conversation over the years to allow medical facilities, but only until recreational was voted, and you watched other areas in other states take part in it, did this get brought back up. So like I said, I stand here as, as a medical marijuana patient with that feeling that this was pushed aside for 11 years, and only now is it being brought back up. I also have a concern about the, the fees for medical. As Don had mentioned earlier, it is, is a different licensing process to get a facility through medical as opposed to recreational. It does look and appear as though the mom-and-pop facility-type investors or entrepreneurs will be able to take part in the recreational as opposed to the medical. I know this from experience. My now-former caregiver tried and tried to get approved for state licensing growing for medical. And the list of assets he had to have, he gave up, went to recreational. He is now going to be a licensed recreational grower, possibly with a facility 20 miles south of here. And I am no longer with a caregiver. So I essentially am driving to Bay City with, and giving my money to a company franchised out of Colorado. So I understand that it is harder to get the medical aspect of it. So as far as resolution for the fee, these people that are going to have the licensed medical shops are not going to be your mom-and-pops. 5,000 is going to be easy for them. They already have established over 100 grand in assets to get this license. I, I urge you to rethink the application fee for that, but to make it more important, this is 11 years in the making. I don't want to go over my time. We are now nine months into recreational, and we are 11 years into medical. Thank you.
Deedee, I'm Jerry Dear from First Avenue here in Cadillac, and I'm learning a lot about what you've been doing lately. It's a tough decision to make for all of us involved, and I guess some of the questions I have, and I, and I don't understand totally all the rules and regulations. Thank goodness you have somebody that can help you with that. I appreciate that, too. As a citizen, we kind of like to know about what's going on in our community. That's why we have public comments. That's why we learn about what's going on. And I guess the question is, if somebody comes up and says, "I really don't care what you're doing regarding medical marijuana, but I don't want my backyard." And I'm sure that's going to happen, I'm planning commission, I'm sure they're going to hear about it, too. But I guess the question is, if somebody doesn't, has a problem with this, is there a time limit? Can I be put on, or can I get a license, but it can be limited to what I, to see how, how this is working out? Can I get a year or two license? Or is it something that's once just granted, it's granted? Is that it? I don't know those questions. I don't know the answers to that. And if somebody says, "I really don't want this here, and I have a complaint about this activity, can I come to the council and ask you to stop it?" I don't know those questions. I don't know those answers. And I guess it's something, I guess we need, all need to know about whether or not the citizens have a chance to say no now. That's just a question. I just, something wanted to throw at you to see what comes back to you. And I'm sure the planning commission will hear about it, too. But thank you for your time.
Hello, Don Koschmeyer. Talk about Medical Marijuana Facilities Licensing Act. I support medical marijuana, I support recreational marijuana. Again, I feel there's no difference. It's all medical. People don't use it because it makes them feel bad. To support my comments about the racketeering that happened with the Medical Marijuana Facilities Licensing Act, in my three minutes, I'll briefly read from West Michigan Politics that July 11th, sources are saying that Rick Johnson, former Speaker of the House, is under FBI investigation for racketeering as Medical Marijuana Board Chairman. Sources familiar with the investigation tell West Michigan Politics that Rick Johnson is under FBI investigation for racketeering and pay-to-play corruption related to his role as Medical Marijuana Board Chairman. Johnson, a former Speaker of the House, turned lobbyist, saw his reign as chair end earlier this year when Governor Whitmer eliminated the controversial board. The investigation was ongoing before a Bridge Magazine article from Craig Mauer, Magger of the Michigan Campaign Finance Network spotlighting Johnson and former Senate Majority Leader Arlen Meikoff seemingly flagrantly violating state law to grease the wheel for marijuana I'm not in favor of any corruption at all. I like transparency. Thank you for kicking the ball around. Thank you for having this discussion on your vote. Choose wisely. Thank you. Thank you for your service.
As I said before, with medical marijuana, I see the same issues as with recreational marijuana. And I would encourage you to bring in local taxpaying businesses as opposed to banning legal taxpaying businesses and having citizens have to drive a long way to get legal products. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll try to make this brief and pick up where I left off. I have been to nearly all the MMFLA license hearings in Lansing. I've been to several judiciary committee hearings in Lansing as well. I've traveled the state, spoke at many council meetings, and what Don Koschmeyer said earlier is very much true. Furthermore, I can tell you what happened simply by the hindsight of telling you what happened in my township with those, we, we had 11 facilities, and they got narrowed down to three or four. Those three or four are nobody that lives in our township. They're people that come from outside the community. You know, and, and essentially, what I tried to explain to my board members is that by you opening up the MMFLA license ahead of the rec, essentially what you're doing is you're opening up the community to be exploited by outsiders, which is essentially what will happen. The capitalization requirements of the MMFLA were simply nothing more than a, a corporate takeover, as allowed to late, big business steamroll over smaller businesses. The gist of the matter is simply that the average person or average entrepreneur in this community, or my community, or that for many Michigan communities, doesn't really have half a million dollars in their bank account to apply for one of those types of licenses. Furthermore, I would like to add, I think the council is, is going in the right direction. I commend you on the idea of lowering the price of the annual fee that helps mom, small mom-and-pop shops get started and get into business. I would like to see this community and many other communities not make the same mistakes that my community did. And it, my community, I was approached by several business owners after the fact, after we approved the MMFLA, and they had great concerns, and they, they addressed to me after the fact, they're like, "Wow, you were right all along about this. We should have listened to you." Even some of my council members said the same thing. So I just want to give you a forewarning of that, and I could give you a lot of other forewarning if I had more time, but at this time, I would like to thank you for allowing me to speak and listening to me. I'd like to thank you, the, the elected council, and also the citizens of Cadillac for having me. Thank you. Happy to.
Three minutes?
Brian from Cadillac. I'd like to address the gentleman's concern about in the neighborhood. I've been to three, I was up here last month. I've been to three states and three different retail stores, and buying your marijuana is just like buying a six-pack of beer at a store. You put it in a bag, you take the bag, you go in your car, and you drive away. There's no loitering, there's no smoking outside the store. I mentioned before, in Breckenridge, they had a problem, and they kicked the two stores from the downtown area out into a strip mall because they were having that problem. There is a way to fix that. It's one of these situations, like the transition house when it came in, nobody wanted it next door to them. But it'll go somewhere, and it'll be used properties, there'll be laws to be enforced, and it shouldn't be a problem. I mean, I appreciate, very broad-minded up there. I, I thank you for supporting this. It's not the 50s or 60s, it's, people want it, so let's give it to them. I don't want it. I don't smoke it anymore. Doesn't bother me if anybody else does, though. Thank you.
Seeing no one else, we'll close public comment and move to discussion of council.
If I, if I might, the red line, sorry, I don't know if you can hear me. The red line changes are nearly identical as to those that were in the first one, just to, just to briefly go over them for the record. On page four, under 10.0.03, under application for authorization subsection C, the suggestion is to strike the word name and just simply say the address, tax identification number, and current zoning designations of the, and then adding property on which the proposed, property on which the, and then goes back into the regular proposed medical marijuana facility, then adding will be located. It was the first suggestion. The other clarification, again, similar to the recreational draft, after the word record, is to add of the property on which the proposed medical marijuana establishment will be located, under subsection E, adding the word signature after the last word of that sentence, which ends in applicants. Under subsection EB, adding after the word per, the words proposed medical marijuana establishment, just clarifying within the ordinance that that's what we're still talking about. Again, under subsection I, it says a location area map of the marijuana facility, would add the word of the proposed marijuana facility. And then we would make the same clarification in striking the word glazing and changing it to window tinting within the scoring category that you find under the chart under E, conditional authorization and random selection process. I believe that is it, aside from clarifying the fee section in which we would, which is on page 10, subsection D, we would add the same clarifying language, establishing both the definition of the annual fee versus the initial fee, and allowing the city council to change it by way of resolution in the future. Mike, is there anything that you need to clarify?
Uh, no. The only thing I wanted to point out was page 10, section 10.3-08, which I should have also added for the recreational. This refers to the transfer area, which is part of the Act 425 agreement, and consistent with the agreement, the use, or sorry, the location of medical marijuana, recreational marijuana facilities is prohibited in the transfer area for two and a half years. This section was added to incorporate the terms of that 425 agreement.
Right.
So did we pass the other one without that in it?
No, it, no, it's in there.
Oh, that's what I thought, okay.
The only, the only thing that will be added is the date of that consent judgment, which is also on the agenda for tonight.
Okay.
Okay. Is anybody comfortable making a motion?
I know that, I understand frustration with it, taking so long to get the medical marijuana law in, but for most of those 11 years, the state was so unclear on requirements, and for us to make an ordinance that could then become just struck down via statute was, we were erring on the side of caution. And I think now the guidelines are clearer, and so it's really our first opportunity to do this with clearer guidelines. I also understand the, the, the problems with the, with corruption, et cetera, with the medical marijuana laws, and have been well aware of that. That, however, at this point, should not keep us from, from passing this ordinance, I believe, and making it, letting us go forward, and as things clarify, that we move forward in a smart and mindful way. And this hearing is the chance to, if you want to say no, say no, that's why we have public hearings, to hear everybody's side, to hear what people's concerns are, to hear what people's thoughts are. Also, in terms of not in my backyard, please, by all means, attend the, the planning commission meetings and let folks know your concerns and what you want to see in our community. We've sent out surveys, we've had public hearings, we've had public forums to try to get people's thoughts on this, and advertise them all over the place. And so I don't think we're doing this in the dark. I don't think we're just throwing this out there. I think we've been really mindful and cautious in our approach, but by the same token, I think it's time to do something.
I'll entertain a motion.
Do you want to?
I'll go ahead.
You've got all the words there, Steve.
I'll do the motion to approve the resolution to adopt ordinance to add new section 10.3 to chapter 10 of the City of Cadillacs, Cadillac City Code to allow certain medical marijuana facilities operated in accordance with state law, along with the language changes discussed by Mr. Pesha, making sure it includes the language to allow changes of any fee by resolution. And I believe that's it.
Should be.
Then support.
Councilmember Shippers?
Yes.
Spelman?
Yes.
Ingalls?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Mayor Folkins?
Yes. Motion carries. Okay.
I think this next one is going to be even more controversial.
So, uh...
Yeah.
That takes us to communications.
Yes, the first request is to approve the placement of one sign at the three locations listed from October 16th to the 19th, 2019, for the Zion Lutheran Church craft show, and the request is the same as last year.
I'll make a motion to approve the request of the Zion Lutheran Church for their sign placements.
Support.
Councilmember Spelman?
Yes.
Ingalls?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Mayor Folkins?
Yes. Motion carries.
The next request is to approve, the request from Friends of the Library for the placement of signs during the hours of the used book sales at the locations listed on the dates provided, and they are providing dates for the remainder of 2019 and 2020.
I'll make that motion to approve the request from the Friends of the Library for the placement of signs during the hours of the used book sales at the locations listed and the dates provided.
Do you have a support?
Support.
Councilmember Ingalls?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Spelman?
Yes.
Mayor Folkins?
Yes. Motion carries.
Next request is to approve the serving of alcoholic beverages at the market on October 12th, 2019, from 3:00 p.m. to 11:00 p.m. for a wedding reception.
Our first wedding reception.
Yeah.
Motion to approve the serving of alcoholic beverages at the market on October 12th from 3:00 to 11:00 for wedding reception.
Support.
Councilmember King?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Spelman?
Yes.
Ingalls?
Yes.
Mayor Folkins?
Yes. Motion carries.
If we said no, would they have to, like, bring those invitations back and redo them all?
Perhaps.
It is that, or they would have a non-alcoholic wedding.
Oh, that's true.
You could do that.
They could still have it there.
You could. Not non-alcoholic, but a, never mind, you knew what I meant.
Hey, Sandy?
Next request is for the display of a banner from October 7th to October 14th, 2018, for the Cadillac Philharmonic Club.
I'll go ahead and make the motion to approve the display of a banner from October 7th, 2019, to October 14th, 2019, for the Cadillac Philharmonic Club.
Support.
Councilmember Shippers?
Yes.
Spohman?
Yes.
Ingles?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Mayor Filkins?
Yes, motion carries.
The next request is for the closure of Lake Street between Harris and Cass from 9:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. on September 14th, 2019, and for the approval of the placement of ribbons on the Clam River Bridge walkway from September 14th to the 23rd, 2019, for the Northern Lakes CMHA Suicide Awareness Walk and Craft Show.
I'm assuming that they're having the craft sale in the street is why they want it closed.
I believe so.
Is that true?
I'll make a motion to approve the closure of Lake Street between Harris and Cass from 9:00 to 4:00 on September 14th, and to approve the placement of ribbons on the Clam River Bridge from September 14th to 23 for the Northern Lakes CMH Suicide Awareness Walk and Craft Show.
Support.
Councilmember Spohman?
Yes.
Ingles?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Mayor Filkins?
Yes, motion carries.
The next request is for the placement of ribbons and signs on the light poles on Mitchell Street between Cass and Spruce Street, subject to the conditions noted, for Oasis Domestic Violence Awareness Month.
I'll make that motion to approve the placement of ribbons and signs on the light poles on Mitchell between Cass and Spruce for Oasis Domestic Violence Awareness Month with the conditions noted.
Support.
Councilmember Ingles?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Spohman?
Yes.
Mayor Filkins?
Yes, motion carries.
That takes us to the city's, city manager's report this evening.
Thank you, members of the city council. The first item under the city manager's report this evening is out-of-state travel request from our director of public safety, Adam Ajepka. Request is for him to travel to Chicago, Illinois, to attend the Annual International Association of Chiefs of Police Conference and Exposition this coming October. I don't have the exact dates here. 26 to 29. He might, he might have the travel the day before, depending upon the arrangements, but generally speaking, the end of the month. The conference will include sessions on some of the following key areas: at-risk populations, community police relations, drugs and their impact on the community, leadership challenges, officer safety and wellness, and officer suicide, police culture and morale, police recruitment and retention, response to active threats, use of force, and violent crime. It's anticipated the cost of the conference will be approximately $2,000. Our fiscal year 2020 budget does have adequate appropriations for this expense, and the recommendation, for me, to council per policy, would be to approve the request.
Motion to approve the out-of-state travel requests for the director of public safety as presented.
Support.
Councilmember King?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Spohman?
Yes.
Ingles?
Yes.
Mayor Filkins?
Yes, motion carries.
Thank you, mayor, and members of the city council. This next item is related, in a sense, not at all to the request that just came forward, but to the travel policy itself. Back when the policy was originally created in 1983, it was within the manager's bailiwick to approve travel requests, whether it was in-state or out-of-state. In 2013, there was a concern that was raised by a member of council that then changed that policy after there was a out-of-state travel done by a police officer, and then that requires that it goes back to city council. Thinking perhaps we might want to bring it back and put it under administration, I thought I'd bring it forward. If we don't, that's okay as well, and if I don't bring it up, then nothing will ever change, one way or another. And so what you have in your packet is a copy of the section, as to what it used to look like, what it got amended to, and then what it would look like going back again to cleaning it up. Either or, just thought I'd bring it forward, so.
Wow, interesting question. I kind of like it coming through council.
That's, I had mentioned to the manager that I think it protects everyone by having it come through and having that transparency. With this request, I also liked it because I went online to see the seminar that Adam's going to, and it's fantastic.
Yeah.
But I think that alleviates any public concern about is this money being spent on a worthwhile venture, and we're approving it, you know, you're approving it, it's your approval, but going through us helps the public see what we're doing.
I kind of agree with that. When we bring it up here, it also gives us an opportunity to support the further education of staff publicly, and let the community see that, that you are getting more training, and that we're supporting more training for you.
I guess I would agree with that.
Well, keep it as is.
Only from the perspective that, that it allows us to see the good things that are going on, the continuing education, but also for the public, so.
Sure. Like I said, it, it.
I think.
Couldn't end the conversation unless they brought it forward, so.
And it's no, it's not that we don't think you would ever make a poor decision with this, and we've always supported your decision. You have the decision, and then we get to hear about it, basically, so.
Yeah, I would agree. I cannot, I can see it both ways, so, too.
Yeah, me too.
We could have quite a bit of them, but it gives us an opportunity to talk about them, and it's something, then, that isn't happening without people knowing about it. So I like that transparency piece of it.
No problem.
Thank you for bringing it up.
No action needed, then.
Yeah, okay, right.
So, moving, moving right along then to the next item.
What a night.
Cadillac Junction Final Consent Judgment. Mike, you want to take this one?
Sure.
All right.
This is the final consent judgment that will officially resolve the litigation in its various forms involving the Cadillac Junction and the transferred area. The final consent judgment that you have in front of you is consistent, and you've already seen this, in, in, in most of it, in the interim stipulated order, which the city council authorized the city attorney to execute and enter in the circuit court. Now that the 425 agreement has been executed, filed with the Secretary of State's office, Office of the Great Seal, as well as the Wexford County Clerk, this is one of the last things that needs to be finished. We still have a couple of agreements related to sewer and water. Those will come later, when and if Clam Lake decides to implement those agreements, but this will be the final consent judgment. So what I'm asking the city council to do is authorize the city attorney to execute the final consent judgment, and have that entered on behalf of the city, and also authorize my office to approve any non-substantive changes. There may be a change coming with respect to paragraph nine of that consent judgment. That paragraph involves the prior annexation petition and closing that out with the State Boundary Commission. That language could change a bit, but it does not affect the city, really, in any way. It's just confirmation that the annexation petition has either been closed or withdrawn.
And Mike, for clarification, the two agreements that you were referring to that may come at a later point in time for water and sewer, those are in reference to the city servicing the Clam Lake DDA area?
That's correct, and those agreements were already agreed to in their form and attached as exhibits to the Act 425 agreement.
Right, I just wanted that to be out there publicly, that we're not, we're not talking about anything outstanding in terms of the transferred area.
That's correct.
Okay.
I'd go ahead and make the motion to approve the final consent judgment as presented, and to authorize the city attorney to execute on behalf of the city, including the authority to make any revisions that are not inconsistent with the terms of the Act 425 agreement and the interim stipulated order.
Support.
Councilmember Spohman?
Yes.
Ingles?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Mayor Filkins?
Yes, motion carries.
Okay.
Well, that was a good 12 years.
Yes, yes.
That was all.
Well, a couple more quick items.
Yeah.
More quick items.
Adoption of ordinances.
Oh, I am with you, yes.
All right.
I was so excited about that being done, I was like, okay, we're done, let's go. Okay, but let's go on to the adoption of.
No, no, thank you. Yeah, so under adoption of ordinances and resolutions, we have two, they are related. The first one is requesting authorization to add Mayor Carly J. Filkins as an authorized signatory to the municipal employees' retirement system that's needed in order to move forward with moving, authorizing contracts, service contracts, and requests for service, buying service credits, which your next item is a request through our housing commission for their director to do that, that thing.
I'd go ahead and make the motion to adopt the resolution establishing authorized signatures for the MERS contracts and service credit purchase approvals.
Support.
Councilmember Ingles?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Spohman?
Yes.
Mayor Filkins?
Yes, motion carries.
Thank you, and as, as I just mentioned, this next item is a request from the executive director from the Cadillac Housing Commission. The Housing Commission is in full support of this request, which is for her to purchase five years of service credit through, through MERS. There is no financial burden, present or future, to the city associated with this request, because the city does not fund this. This is all funded through the Cadillac Housing Commission. However, we do need to, to approve it.
All right, I'll make a motion to adopt the governing body resolution approving MERS service credit purchase as presented.
Support.
Councilmember King?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Spohman?
Yes.
Ingles?
Yes.
Mayor Filkins?
Yes, motion carries.
Okay, that takes care of everything this evening.
Yes.
Well, we have public comments, and.
Yes, we do have the minutes from the Cadillac, Wexford Airport Authority's last meeting in our packets, and then that takes us to the last public comment for this evening.
My name is Bob Jones. Better late than never, I didn't get here in time for the recreational marijuana, but I will make some comments, even though you passed the ordinance. About three or four days ago, the Surgeon General, anybody aware, that he came up with a revised report on marijuana, and we know that the federal government doesn't agree with the state government on this, and according to the Surgeon General, he just did not see any marijuana. He says marijuana today is 10 times more potent than it was a few years ago, what he calls his mother's, his mother's day. So it's an interesting thing to note. And also, as far as mind-altering drugs, marijuana is a mind-altering drug, and I just got a report yesterday from my brother down in Bay City, who, there's a map of each county in the state, and how many opioid pills are consumed by per person, and we're in the top five in Wexford County. Even some of the big counties like, oh, down by Oakland, Wayne, McComb, they're down in the twenties to forties, and we're in 67, so we're in the top. We're also very high in the number of people, number of people who are on the sex offenders' list by county, way above the national average. So I just want to talk about the quality of life, and how do employers having a hard time getting people to, that can pass the drug test. They've made it more lenient just to get people, but with the long haul, decisions will be made about employee, getting good employees. So I think we got to be careful on all these fronts that we, and don't try to attract people who don't, who are on mind-altering drugs, as far as the character of our community, the employment in our community, and our children. So I urge you to read that. Get on the website and read the Surgeon General's report. It's on the website, and so are some of the other stuff I just got through talking about. And I'm a citizen, I care about Cadillac, I've been here 65, since 1965, and I'm going to continue to work for the betterment of our community, in jobs and housing, and things that I've been working on, but just giving you some food for thought. Thank you.
Logan Council, Michelle, with all due respect, Mr. Jones, correct?
Pardon?
You said Jones was your last name?
Jones.
Michelle, Michelle, if you would talk to us and add to the audience. No, no, I just, with all due respect to him, I am a mother, I have a 10-month-old daughter, I am a marijuana user, I do not use in front of my daughter, I do not use when my daughter is in my home unless my husband is there to take care of her. I have a job, I don't go to work under the influence of marijuana, I have been working since I was 14 years old. I have work ethic more than most people my age, and that's, to me, that's a good thing. Because I'm a marijuana user, does that make me less of a hard worker? Does that make me less of a mother? I do not believe so. Additionally, I feel that if we, as a community, do not take into account all of the positives and negatives, respectively, that can happen with allowing these facilities to come in and flourish, and take hold of what our community, what our people within our community can accomplish, not people necessarily from outside, people within our community that want to build businesses from the ground up, people that have owned businesses before, people, sorry, people that have lost businesses in this community, like myself. I want to start over, I want to do that here, I want to stay in Cadillac, I want to build my family here, I want to build this business for this town, I want to supply it with people like Evan, who I've known for years, that I know needs this. Myself, I have, I have severe ADHD, I have bipolar, I have migraines that will put me down for weeks on end. If I do not consume in those moments, I am not even a person. I can't take care of my daughter in those moments. So in those moments, I am less of a person, because I can't, because I can't do what I need to do, I have to drive hours away to get my, my medicine, medicine that if I were to go to the doctor and get prescribed something like an opioid, and turn into another statistic of an epidemic within this city, within these limits. I have a friend that her, her ex has died four times from opioids, but we have such a hard time in this community grasping the concept of what can be good? Does it need to be in our backyards? No, but can it be within our community and sustainable and still viable for this community? Absolutely. And I just want you all to take everything that has been said here tonight into consideration. As a mother of a 10-month-old daughter, as a hard-working member of this community, as somebody that has owned a business in this community, thank you for your time. somebody that has owned a business in this community, thank you for your time.
Don Koshmater, thank you again for having this conversation. I knew the clock was ticking on, the city manager said November. The Michigan Medical Marijuana Provisioning Center Regulation Act was House Bill 4271, and it was a good bill, and it passed the House and was waiting to go through the Senate, but they waited till the last day of voting, and then it got shot down. Instead of seeing a no vote, they pulled the bill, and it died in a lame-duck session in late 2014. After all the, after all the deals were made in 2016, we have the Medical Marijuana Facilities Licensing Act, and I already spoke of that. Marijuana, I believe, is a positive thing. Can it be abused? Anything can be abused. Marijuana's THC and marijuana's CBD. You're seeing CBD sold in a lot of different businesses within our city limits, some in Herring Township, all over Michigan, everywhere. CBD can be used, pain treatment, you know, all kinds of, all kinds of uses, and that's a form of marijuana. It's just 0.03% THC or less. THC, CBD, it's all marijuana, it's all medicine, and I'd like to see, I'd like to see some businesses, I'd like to be part of that. With the proposal, Proposition 1 passing, it's allowed 12 plants per household, not per person, per household, 12 plants per household. That's a lot of households that could be growing marijuana, either inside in a grow room or in an enclosed facility outside, not viewable from the street or wherever, but like to see businesses, like to see grows, like to see retail establishments. Reefer Madness has ended years ago, and thanks again for this council for passing the resolutions the way it did. Thank you.
Logan, my final thoughts, I just want to kind of rehash a bit of what I've been saying all night. The most important, first, I'd like to commend you on adopting this ordinance or looking into adopting both recreational and medical, and even though I want you to understand, I am pro, you know, cannabis all the way, and pro-medical and pro-recreational. The devil is in the details, as they say, and when I realized that our Michigan State Legislature had been, you know, lobbied by foreigners from another country to pass the MMFLA, I realized that it was poor and bad-written legislation for the sole purpose of making rich people rich and poor people poor and going to jail. I've said these things at my council, I know that they are profound statements, and some of them can be, you know, breathtaking at times, but the fact of the matter is that you really have a job ahead of you to be cautious in how you adopt this. The, I could just tell you from my own experience in my own community, just watching the utter sad and depressing failure of a council to understand the inner dynamics of this, of these laws and how they came into be. My only advice to you is, please look at the MMFLA as being a piece of legislation. It was, it's Swiss cheese, and it's full of holes, and it's full of rigged legislation for special interests. When you look at the Prop 1, that was passed by the people, and the people have spoken already. So with that, I commend you to try to do the right thing. If you have any further questions, you're welcome to call me, you have my cell number, and for that matter, thank you, and again, thank the residents of Cadillac. I only came here because I wanted to share information that I had, because to see what happened in my township is a tragedy, and what happened there is simply that we had residents who had the opportunity to do businesses, and what we did was, we created a lousy ordinance that crushed them and rolled out the red carpet for a few people to steamroll in on the community and undermine it, so thank you. Thank you.
Okay, so no one else, we'll close public comment and move to good of the order this evening.
Couple of things. One, I'd like to thank the members of the city council for all the time and effort spent into discussing these items regarding marijuana, and just to reiterate for the public, this was not something that the council rushed into. We've had this conversation started more than a year ago. We had a public forum in our high school auditorium. We had a survey that was sent to all of our utility customers. Those are people that are living in the community or own property in the community. They certainly have an invoice in their name for property that is connected to our utilities, and so we wanted to try to get a good bead on their opinions. We also have the data from the November statewide ballot initiative, in which although in the county it failed, it did pass locally here within our city limits, that being in favor of seeing recreational marijuana move forward. And I think, you know, in terms of the general concern or issues about timing, it's important to remember that the default position on the medical side was that you're automatically opted out, and so the city council, I think, took the necessary time to really wrap its head around, you know, where that was going. It waited until the rules were permanent, and I think in respect to the recreational side of it, there is a clock. The default position is that you are automatically in, and I think if you look at what the data is showing, there are hundreds and hundreds of municipalities that are just simply opting out right now, instead of taking the time like what we just did over the last, you know, month or so, and really trying to wrap our heads around it and in regulating it. They're opting out and are saying, we'll take a wait-and-see approach. Not that that's not okay, but the path that we took was to say, okay, we're gonna, we're gonna regulate, and we're gonna put our best foot forward, and we're gonna get this process going now, which is what we've done, and now it's gonna go to the Planning Commission, and then it'll eventually come back here later this fall for final approval. So I would like to commend the city council. I think that these issues, while they may seem simple, are really a lot more complex, and, you know, proof of that is just how we are discussing it. These are complex issues. The only other thing I would like to mention is that next Wednesday, September 11th, the city will be hosting its Child Safety Expo here at this complex, 200 North Lake Street. The special event starts at 4:00 and goes till basically 7:00. There'll be a variety of agencies with tables with information, there's fun activities for kids of all ages to participate in. Essentially, they'll have a chance to meet the public safety fleet, which is kind of a neat thing to do.
Fire trucks.
Fire trucks, police cars.
Police cars.
Meet and greet officers on both sides of the aisle as well, so it's a great event. I would encourage folks to stop down if you are in town, so.
Good, thank you.
I'd just like to say one thing. Over the years, I've been getting letters from folks, and I love to hear from people, and I love to hear people's concerns. What I would ask, and I know all of us have gotten anonymous letters multiple times, and it's very difficult to be able to address issues not knowing from where they come. If you put your name on something, you're not going to get in trouble. What you're gonna get is an opportunity for a face-to-face and to have a conversation so that we can actually maybe respond to your questions. Anytime I've ever gotten a letter with a problem or a concern, I've always passed it on to staff to ask them to look into those things, but it's really hard to be able to then, when people tell me they have a problem and I know who it is, I can get back with them and say, here's what we're doing about this, but when you just send something in the dark, it's, you won't know what we're doing about your concern, so please, we don't bite, and we're not going to retaliate in any way. If you have concerns in town, let us know, and we'll do what we can to pass it on to the people that can make a difference, and then get back to you and let you know how it's going.
All right. If there's nothing else, we'll go ahead and adjourn.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Mike, thank you.